Good morning. I'd like to call the February 23, 2012 Planning Commission hearing to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
My pledge of allegiance to the high, honorable states of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Commissioner Steven Anstott.
Here.
Commissioner Paul McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Laura Duquesne.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Westner.
Present.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez.
Here.
I'll move on to item four, public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matter, not appearing on the agenda. Do we have any cards? Seeing none, we'll go on to item five, the annual meeting to elect the Chair and Vice-Chair and to set the schedule of hearings for the year 2012. So I would figuratively hand over the gavel to the Planning Director to call for the election for the Chair. Thank you very much, Chair Duquesne. I'd like to ask for nominations for the Chair of the Planning Commission.
I move that Commissioner Anstott be nominated for Chair.
I would second that motion.
Are there any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed.
Okay, so do I call for the vote then? You call for the vote. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we're going to switch Chairs and Mr. Anstott will take over his Chair. And then we'll nominate the Vice-Chair. I'd like to nominate Michael Westner.
I'll second that motion.
Any more nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
So we'll call for the vote, please. All in favor of Michael, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? On that matter, I broke my glasses. That's interesting.
I'm going to start.
I was just going to say. Well, I'll go halfway then. The first item on the agenda, CUP 3489-2 Mauser Rock Products. This matter was continued from December 15, 2011. Do we have our staff report, please?
Yes, you do. Thank you Chairman and Commissioners. Ebony J. McGee and I'll be representing Planning Staff on this item. As you mentioned, this item was continued from December 15. It's the Mauser Rock Ojai Quarry Order to Comply with SMARA and CUP Revocation Hearing. Just as a refresher, the site is located at 1555 Maricopa Highway, right outside of the city of Ojai. Here's an aerial of the site. On December 15, your Commission heard this item and voted to continue the hearing until today, February 23, 2012. The Planning Commission directed Mr. Larry Mausler, owner and operator of the Mauser Rock Ojai Quarry, and the Planning Staff to work together to bring this quarry into compliance. More specifically, the Planning Commission directed the operator to post a $25,000 financial assurance by December 24 and then post an additional $25,000 within 30 days, pay $9,875.52 towards the compliance fees, and total post of financial assurance of $70,600. And finally, work with staff to finalize the financial assurance cost estimate and Reclamation Plan Amendment that would be necessary to bring the site into full compliance. We are happy to report that the operator did post the initial $25,000 and posted an additional $52,290,000. He paid the installment of $9,875.52, posting a total of $99,612.33. And we finalized the financial assurance cost estimate last Friday, and he also submitted a Reclamation Plan Amendment. Currently, as of this morning, the operator posted the $244,000 that the financial assurance cost estimate called for. The county has accepted that estimate and will send it to OMR for their 45-day mandatory review period. The operator has also submitted his Reclamation Plan Compliance Amendment that will bring his site into full compliance with SMARA. We have preliminarily reviewed the Reclamation Plan Compliance Amendment, and it is substantially in conformance with SMARA. A sequo document will be prepared concurrently with OMR's review once we send it for their 45-day mandatory review as well. We have also entered into a compliance agreement with the operator that takes care of all his violations. It will abate all of them and puts him on a plan to bring him current on his processing fees. So at this time, Planning Division staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions: certify that the Commission has reviewed and considered the staff report and all exhibits thereto, and has considered all comments received by the public hearing on this matter, and continue the hearing for a period of 90 days to allow the county to continue processing the Reclamation Plan Compliance Amendment and the financial assurance cost estimate in accordance with SMARA Section 277-4 CMD. Thank you. That will conclude our presentation.
Okay, I'd like to call for disclosure from the Commissioners, please. At this time, each Commissioner will state to the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written... Ex parte communication regarding this agenda item, and that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us in this matter. Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosure.
Commissioner Weisner?
Only the two articles relating to this matter appear in the Ventura County Star.
Commissioner Maji?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Duquesne?
I too read the paper, the article, and the comments, and I also had two telephone conversations with Grace Mausler. She called me at my home. We spoke on a wide range of issues. The ones that pertain to this, though, I shared with her that the decisions that were made were made by five people and not just one person. I advised her to work with Planning Staff and the Planning Director. Let's see, what else? And then I called her back after I also spoke to the Planning Director, who let me know that they were making payments, as the Planning Commission directed them to do at this last I also spoke to my supervisor, Linda Parks, who had Mr. Mausler in the office when I said that Grace had called me. So I believe that's it.
For my part, I spoke to the Planning Director yesterday regarding the status of the proceeding. Nothing that she told me wasn't already disclosed in the staff report. Does anyone have questions, the staff? Seeing none, Mr. Mausler, do you have any presentation to make? Oh, excuse me. Yes, this will open the public hearing.
Good morning. The last time we were here, it was pretty brutal for everyone, and we had this 800-pound gorilla that was uncaged and running around. And I just want to tell the Commission that through a lot of hard work with staff and myself, we put this gorilla back in the cage. And, you know, I think we have resolution to this. I think we have a plan on further cleaning up the ongoing issues with the permitting at the quarry. There are loose ends up there from the old CUP and whatnot, but I just want to say that I think everybody has worked pretty diligently in resolving this. I know both Planning Director and myself got your message when we were here, and it wasn't easy, but we've managed to accomplish what I think all parties wanted. I would request that Don Jensen from Jensen Engineering speak to you about a few more of the details in this permitting that we'd like to get on to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mausler. Any questions to Mr. Mausler? Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Don Jensen, 1672 Donlin Street in Ventura. Congratulations, Chairman. I'm sure you'll serve well for the year. I really did want to reach out to staff and thank them very much for how much attention they put on this project. Both Brian and Ebony were very, very, very responsive, Kim as well. Every time we needed to get an answer, we had it. Took a little while to get the issue kind of honed in and the final numbers figured out, but we ended up, I think, at about 100,000 yards of reclaimed volume. I think we were talking over 300 at the last hearing. And that's going to come off the site and be pushed down the hill in accordance to the 1995 Reclamation Plan. What we are going to do as soon as we get this part behind us and the mine's back in compliance is bring forth an amendment that makes the mine operation look closer to the way the actual operation is. And what that really is, is back in 1995, they did an exhibit that really just showed kind of a stair step. I kind of compare it to the, you know, Egyptian pyramids. It's just kind of a 30-foot-10, 30-foot-10, all the way up to the top of the hill. And that didn't show any access. It didn't show any drainage patterns coming off the mine face. It didn't show a lot of things that are really the operational things that happen out there in that mine today. So we'll be coming back in as soon as we can put it together with an operations, probably a CUP mod, that really matches the operation out there and allows... This argument we had as to what it really said and what it really was, we'll all be behind this, and we'll be working with the mining compliance going forward for as long as we can continue to operate out there. But again, I want to thank staff and thank the Commission for their attention.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Any more speakers, Mr. Mausler? Any more speakers for you?
No.
Thank you. Not for this matter. I've got no cards for this matter. I have no cards for anyone in opposition. Is anyone here in opposition?
I would also just like to say that we did hear you, you know, to go back and work with Mr. Mausler in the quarry. It was nice that he hired Jensen Engineering. He has a lot of expertise in this field, and it's been easy to work through the process. And Mr. and Mr. Mausler, I know it's been difficult, but they have done everything that you've asked them to do and everything that we've asked them to do, and they did get to where they need to be this morning, and I couldn't be happier for them. So they have worked diligently, and I wanted to let you know that.
That's good to hear. Well, then I'll close the public hearing.
Excuse me.
Oh, yes.
I do have questions for staff. I know that OMR is going to review the face. Are they also going to... Do they also review the Compliance Amendment?
The Reclamation Plan Compliance Amendment will be reviewed by staff and, of course, our internal, you know, our geologists and so on and so forth for geotechnical issues, but OMR is the other reviewing body. And they have 45 days to review it. They will then issue what they call Director Comments. We'll have 30 days to respond to those comments, and at that time, we'll set it for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Is this quarry allowed to be operating, or are they still closed down pending this review?
They've always been able to operate. They can operate.
Thank you. Can I get a clarification from staff? I understand part of this process resulted in the quarry being taken off a state list for various jobs. What is the status of that this time?
The operator's still off of the 3098 list, but we did send a letter to OMR letting them know the status of Mr. Mausler's compliance and advising that we don't see any reason why he wouldn't be eligible once the terms of the condition of the compliance agreement are met.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Anstott?
Yes.
It looked to me that Mr. Mausler wanted to approach and maybe clarify something about the operations.
That's fine. We'll reopen the public hearing. Hear Mr. Mausler if he wishes to speak.
I think the question was asked and answered about the AB 3098 list, where still staff has sent a letter to the state, OMR, stating that I should be reinstated. Now it's a matter of waiting for OMR to do this. So essentially, I am still not able to sell material to any public agency. I can sell to private agencies, but there aren't any private agencies out there purchasing anything today. But I feel we're there. It's just a matter of waiting for the state to do their paperwork.
Thank you, sir. Have we done everything we can do to facilitate him being restored to the list, given his performance?
Yes. You know, it's not a list that we control, taking people on or putting people off, but we did make the call up there to the state, and we did write the letter saying that he has done everything in compliance with being eligible for the list. And so what needs to happen is they need to actually get the Reclamation Plan in their hands, right? And those last few details are being worked out between Jensen and Ebony. And so once they get that, hopefully, today, tomorrow, or Monday, you know, then he will be able to make... Jim Pompey from the Office of Mine Reclamation will be able to make that decision.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you wish to speak?
Yes.
On this issue?
We've reopened.
Yes, I've reopened the public hearing. Would you please state your name and address, please?
Morning, Chairman Anstott and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Pat Baggerly, representing the Environmental Coalition. The Environmental Coalition has some concerns about the environmental consequences of the Reclamation Plan. And I'm going to read a comment here for you. While the Mausler family is returning to the Planning Commission after paying some of their debts to Ventura County, many environmental issues related to the Ojai Quarry have not been addressed. Although an environmental impact report was previously approved before the Mausler purchased the quarry, it predated the time when the steelhead in the Ventura River and its major tributaries that include the North Fork of the Matilla Hawk Creek, which is directly below the quarry, had identified the federally listed Southern California steelhead as an endangered species. So that was not considered in the EIR. The Environmental Coalition of Ventura County believes that before Ventura County Planning Commission may take an action to approve a new Reclamation Plan or the addition of new uses for the property, that new environmental review should take place so that new significant impacts from the plan and equipment can be fully disclosed and mitigation measures provided. For example, the addition of allowing a rock crusher to operate has the ability to add to the amount of total particulate matter that is already at a level of non-attainment for health-based air quality standards and should be identified as a significant adverse impact. The additional sediment may also cause biological impacts to the stream. Anyway, it's been suggested that maybe an addendum is just going to be provided for this major impact, for all these impacts. I hope that the Planning Commission will recommend an initial study be done and impacts from this project be identified and mitigated. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Any further staff response?
Yeah, I would like to direct her concerns to the appropriate counsel regarding the change in standards with the steelhead and whether the thing about the addendum and the initial assessment that kind of flew by me kind of fast. Could counsel respond to those concerns?
Well, I'm not sure if it's an issue for counsel right now because the issue of a subsequent entitlement isn't before the Planning Commission right now. So obviously, if they apply and are granted, the Planning Department would do the appropriate environmental review, but those entitlements are not before us right now.
Okay. Okay.
Any further discussion? Any further comments, Mr. Mausler? Do you have any further comment?
No.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing then and call for deliberations on the part of the Commission.
I have a quick question, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry.
A point of clarification on the procedural. Ms. McGee had indicated that she was going to set this for another public hearing in 90 days. Is it... Or is it to continue this public hearing?
It's to continue this public hearing.
Okay. To a date certain?
We could schedule it for a date certain.
So you don't have to re-notice the whole thing, or is... I just wanted... I wasn't sure because she had said she was going to set it against.
Can you look for a date?
Okay.
Okay, I would like to move staff's recommended actions to one and two.
Before that, I would like to say something that might affect that. Mr. Mausler called in to question the billing practices of the county of Ventura, and it's been a subject of some concern for lots of people. In my practice, everyone grouches about whatever people charge. I understand and appreciate that. But when I reviewed the itemized statement of services rendered in this project, I found that they did not have what I consider significant detail. And I think it's a legitimate question that can be raised by an applicant regarding the nature and the extent of services rendered. And I don't mean to impugn the character of anyone involved at all. I just think the detail that I saw for the work and the charges was woefully inadequate. And I would like, when we come back for that date certain, I would like to be able to discuss that issue. And this is not so much raising an issue in this particular matter, but in general because in a law firm, where I've been for years and years, we keep track of our time in 10-minute intervals. And I know that sounds ridiculous to a lot of people. But when you're charged these amounts of money, I think the people are entitled to a more itemized statement of services rendered, and I tender that to the Planning Director, not only in this matter, but in all matters where these costs and expenses are so significant. And I would like to see a discussion when this matter comes back of those fees and charges.
I don't know how that would change my motion to approve the recommended actions and continue this hearing to a date certain. That motion's on the table.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Let's go off the roll call vote. Do we have a roll call on this, or all in favor? Is that all we do?
You're the Chair. You pulled the trigger. Your honor, power is something...
So Commissioner Anstott, we need to find a... Or Chair Anstott, I'm sorry. We need to find a date.
Okay.
So May 24?
2012.
Thank you.
Let's hope so.
So we have a motion?
You could add that to your motion.
I'm assuming you're including that date in your motion, or...
Some of it.
Okay. Do I have a second?
You've got it.
Second. Let's go off. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We're going to take a short break to allow counsel to change Chairs, among others. Ladies and gentlemen, would you take your seats, please, and we'll continue. The next item on the agenda is a request for a conditional use permit, LU 11-0019, Dulham Westside Properties. Could I have the staff report, please?
Good morning. I'm Andrea Ozde with the Planning Division, and I'm presenting this morning to you LU 11-0019, which is a requested CUP for over 100,000 square feet of principal agricultural structures related to a greenhouse nursery operation known as Dulham Nursery on 195 Victoria Avenue in Oxnard. This hearing was continued from February 2, 2012, and the only reason this is before you today is because this is a new CUP even though it is an existing facility. So typically, this would be a modification reviewed by the Planning Director. However, it is considered to be a new CUP, so it is before the Planning Commission. The applicant is John Dulham of Dulham Nursery, and he cannot be here today, so his wife, Linda Dulham, is here, as well as the representatives, which are Tom Figg and Dennis Cutler. I just wanted to make sure that you have Exhibit A, which was forwarded to you on Tuesday, and that is a letter from the Dulhams to you, and we will be addressing that further in the staff report review. This is a picture of the location of the site. It is a 57.5-acre property located at the corner of Teal Club Road and Victoria Avenue, just north of the Oxnard city limits. As you can see, it is a very agriculturally dense area of Oxnard between Harbor Boulevard and Victoria Avenue. In fact, the only non-agricultural use in this area is the Oxnard Airport, which is to the southeast of the property outlined in red. This is a photo of the entire property, all 57 and a half acres. Most of the property is in row crops to the west. That's about 2/3 of the property. And the development related to Dulham Nursery is in the eastern third of the property, about 21.5 acres. Again, this is an existing facility, and there are no new structures that are proposed. The CUP area contains about 252,000 square feet of existing buildings, and the nursery has been in operation since 1963 and propagates vegetable varieties such as lettuce and cabbage. Since 1963, permits have been issued for greenhouses and agricultural accessory structures, and in 1979, the Planning Commission approved CUP 3873 for construction of additional agricultural structures and greenhouse buildings up to 450,000 square feet. And it's important to note here that not all of those structures were built and were at a total of 252,000 to date. And all of these buildings were incorporated into a 30-year CUP expiring in 2009. The CUP was modified in 1995 to include a farmworker dwelling unit expiring in 2005. And regardless of whether the CUP actually expired in 2005 or in 2009, that is a moot point today because both of those dates are in the past. So we are... We're all in agreement that a new CUP is required regardless of the actual expiration date, 2005 or 2009. And although the use is technically non-compliant with the non-coastal zoning ordinance, no violation was issued, and the applicant is diligently working to reinstate the CUP, and that's why we're here before you today. So there is no formal violation that has been issued on the property. And while the county did not conduct condition compliance review as frequently as dictated in the original CUP's condition, it is ultimately the permittee's responsibility to monitor the pending expiration dates and make sure that the CUP does not expire. And in fact, the section number of the non-coastal zoning ordinance is 8111-4.7, which states the permittee is solely responsible for the timely renewal of a permit. The county has no obligation to notify the permittee of the imminent expiration of the permit. The new CUP request is for the continuation of the operation of the greenhouse nursery under a new 30-year CUP. This is a more zoomed-in version of the Dulham Nursery site, not the entire site, but just the nursery area. And you can see it's organized into four sections. The greenhouses and growing buildings are at the north end of the site, and in the southeastern portion of the site are all the office... portion of the site are all the offices and the workshops, all the equipment maintenance areas. Then there's the farmworker dwelling in the southwest of the site, and all other areas are used for outdoor staging of juvenile plants. This is one of the greenhouse interiors showing some vegetables being grown. Vegetables are either placed in a greenhouse like this one or in a germination chamber for approximately one month, and at that time, they are pulled out, put into the outdoor staging areas, and are left there until they're ready to be loaded and delivered by Dulham Nursery to customers. This is the view of the nursery from Victoria Avenue looking southwest. You can see the office area, and you're looking toward the parking area of the site. This is a portion of the about 1,000 feet of frontage along Victoria Avenue. So it's quite a bit of frontage that the Dulham Nursery has on Victoria. The nursery separated from Victoria by mature landscaping, which spans the entire length of the Victoria frontage. And that effectively accomplishes several of the noncoastal zoning ordinance listed purposes of providing visual relief from pavement and vehicles and landscape screening adjacent to streets. And also, this was a requirement of the original CUP that all this landscaping be put in. This is another photo from further north on Victoria. You can see the greenhouses, and also, the trees in the background are the southern extent of the property. Another looking north, and again, you see the greenhouses, and that's the northern extent of the property. And finally, just the mature landscaping from across Victoria looking toward the equipment maintenance area. The project was reviewed pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, and was determined to be eligible for a categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 for existing facilities involving negligible or no expansion of use beyond that existing at the time of the lead agency's determination. The Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee, known as APAC, reviewed the project on May 11th of last year and recommended that your commission approve the project. Notice of the original February 2 hearing was made in the Ventura County Star and also mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the project parcel. The notice of the continued hearing to today was noticed to property owners within 300 feet and also was made in an announcement by the Planning Director at the January 26 Planning Commission meeting. And other than Exhibit A, which you have received, there have been no other public comments regarding this project. In fact, no calls, emails, letters, nothing of the sort. As you know, projects almost always require conditions to be satisfied following approval and prior to the issuance of a zoning clearance. These are standard conditions applied to projects as necessary depending on the circumstances of the case. Even time extensions that are part of CUPs are required to obtain a use inauguration zoning clearance. For this particular CUP, there were a handful of prior to zoning clearance conditions imposed by the Planning Division, by the Watershed Protection District, and by the Air Pollution Control District, and they're listed here. These next three slides summarize all of the applicant's requested changes to the conditions that they should be modified, and that is since the first version of the project conditions was released to them. And based on the numerous discussions over the last several months, many of the issues have been resolved, which you'll see in the next couple of slides as well. I've highlighted in yellow the ones that have been resolved, and I'll be sure to focus more on the ones in red, which are the ones that are remaining. And these are the conditions that are discussed in Exhibit A as well, that were called out and discussed in detail by the applicant. The applicant's recommended changes to the planning conditions start with number one, the project description. The applicant requests that the language be included, that the original CUP be used to govern the expired CUP area until such time as a new zoning clearance is issued, and that no violation is considered to exist. The Planning Division has not issued a violation and has no plans to issue a violation at this time. We've been in process for about a year now, and we're ready to come to a conclusion on this case as well. So there are no plans to issue a violation at this time. However, the Planning Division is not willing to acknowledge that there is no violation because technically, there is one. The property is being used as a greenhouse nursery with no valid CUP. So we're not going forward with a violation, but we believe that because we're here today and hopefully we'll have a project approval, we can move forward and not need to go into more detail about which conditions apply to this project. Condition number two, required improvements for the CUP. The applicant requests that no required improvements or plans be deemed necessary following project approval if approved by your commission today. However, an approved sign plan and lighting plan are necessary in order for the CUP to be used inaugurated, so an approval today would not finish all responsibilities that the applicant has following project approval. Next is condition number seven, consolidation of exhibits. The applicant requests that the conditions specify which other regulatory agencies' permits are required to be submitted prior to the issuance of a zoning clearance. The Planning Director has previously addressed this condition with the applicant in the hopes that this would alleviate the concern, and the modification was made that instead of having the applicant be responsible for providing all documentation, the Planning Director would specifically ask for whatever those documents were, and that way, the applicant or the permutee would not have to wonder if they had been complying with that condition. So the request would come directly from the Planning Director and ask for those exhibits or those documents. And at this time, there are no documents that we are requesting, so this condition could actually be checked off the list and would be, would not be one of the conditions that would be holding up the issuance of a zoning clearance. Condition number 18, the landscape plans. The applicant requests deferral to the original CUP for all landscaping requirements. The previously approved plan was determined to be sufficient for the purposes of this CUP, so there is no new landscaping plan being required by the applicant at this time, just compliance with the original landscaping plan. Condition number 19, the applicant wishes to require a lighting plan only for lighting beyond the existing lighting features and facilities at the site. However, we do not have any record of an approved lighting plan or any documentation that the lighting is approved on-site. So that would be one of the few requirements that the applicant would be required to provide to the Planning Division following approval and prior to the issuance of a zoning clearance for use inauguration. And finally, condition 20, sign plan. The applicant wishes to require a sign plan only for new signage. However, the Planning Division does not have record that the existing signage is in conformance with the noncoastal zoning ordinance, so we do require that a sign plan be provided. And that can be simply a photo of what already exists, and then also relocation to an area that would be sufficient and in accordance with the noncoastal zoning ordinance. It's also important to note here that a meeting was scheduled for February 1 between county staff and the applicant and his and her representatives, and that meeting was initially accepted and then declined due to fees that would be necessary for the applicant to pay for that meeting. And that meeting was intended to be a discussion of the conditions, to see if we could come to some resolution of the issues that remain. However, that meeting was declined, and so we're here before you today on February 23 instead of the 2nd. At this time, I'd like to discuss the issues that were brought up in the letter. Exhibit A, we already discussed the conditions in the second part of the letter, the exhibits. But here, let's go through the actual letter, the first three pages. And we'll start in the second paragraph. The discussion is here about the expiration dates, 2005 and 2009. And as I discussed already, the true date of the expiration is a moot point. The gist of it is that the permit has expired, and so a new CUP is necessary. CUP, this is the second one. CUP 3873 required the Planning Director to review the subject site and the conditions of the CUP every five years. Ideally, the Planning Division would have done that. However, in this case, it didn't occur for one reason or another. I don't know why. But it is the permutee's responsibility, as I mentioned before, to monitor the pending expiration date and make sure that an application is made for a time extension prior to that expiration. Third paragraph. We in fact discovered the expiration of CUP 3873, and this is the Dulham stating that. The Planning Division agrees. We know that they came forward and they presented the expiration and the application for a new CUP. So there's no debate about who discovered the CUP expiration. The next paragraph. We have simply reached an impasse with the Planning Director, and the problem relates to the standard boilerplate conditions imposed on Dulham Nursery for a new CUP, not for a renewal CUP for an ongoing business operating for over 50 years. This again was the reason for that meeting that was scheduled for February 1 at no charge to the applicant. But the applicant believes that impasse has been reached and that there was no other mechanism for discussing the conditions except before your commission today. There's nothing out of the ordinary with this case. As I told you before, many cases require prior to issuance zoning clearance, or zoning clearances, either for use inauguration or for construction. Those are the two different types of zoning clearances that we have. Even though the term is use inauguration and can be a little bit confusing, it doesn't mean that the use doesn't exist. It's just the name of the zoning clearance that is given in this kind of situation, or in the case of a new CUP being granted for a vacant piece of property at this time, for a time extension, any of those situations. The next page, first paragraph, about three lines down. We have worked directly with the case planner, who we believed in turn addressed our issues with her superiors. My manager was involved in the discussions of all the revisions to the conditions that were presented and requested, and we agreed to modify many of them to improve the set of conditions. And the Planning Director offered that meeting to see if we could reach consensus on the remaining conditions. The next paragraph. The Planning Department has asked us to submit plans for lighting, landscape, and signage with no explanation as to purpose or scope. We did in fact have a meeting back in August where we discussed the first round of conditions, the draft conditions, to see if there was any way to come to some agreement or some resolution on the first round of revisions and a review by the applicant. The lighting, as mentioned at that time, was necessary to submit a lighting plan simply because there had not previously been an approved lighting plan, and we had no indication that the lighting on-site was there with permit. So that is why we're requesting a lighting plan as a condition. A landscape plan? There is no landscaping plan being requested at this time for this permit. We are using the previous one that was approved under CUP 3873. And signage? The signage is not in conformance with the noncoastal zoning ordinance, so we're requesting a sign plan, which should be a fairly simple operation to produce, especially given that the sign already exists, so that can be used in preparing the new sign plan. Further down that paragraph, about halfway. Other agencies have modified their standard conditions to better fit our situation. We did evaluate whether the requested changes were necessary and appropriate and made those changes that we determined could be made. And the remaining six are the ones where we could just not come to a resolution prior to today's meeting. The next paragraph, third line. The standard zone clearance procedure is linked to an initiation of use and/or construction, both of which are inappropriate to our situation. I already addressed that with the discussion of the use inauguration zoning clearance versus construction being terms that we use in the Planning Division. Those are the types of zoning clearances that we issue, but there's no implication that a use inauguration zoning clearance means that the use is not already in operation. The next paragraph. The language we recommend in Exhibit 2 suggesting performance standards which can accomplish the same outcome as the boilerplate conditions. We feel that the remaining conditions, the ones, the six that are unresolved, that by changing those in accordance to how the applicant would want those changed would be compromising the county and the Planning Division's responsibilities for ensuring compliance with the noncoastal zoning ordinance. And last paragraph. We believe it is unreasonable that a business operating for over 50 years, free of any violations, and requesting no change to the previous CUP be forced to comply with the boilerplate conditions applying to a new business project. And to the contrary, we believe we have accommodated the applicant as best we could. Given the circumstances of an existing facility, we're not requesting redesign in order to bring the project exactly to how we would require it as though it were a new project coming in today. So we're acknowledging that it's existing, that it's there, and are doing our best to be reasonable in the requirements that we are imposing. That summarizes the issues of Exhibit A and the six red conditions, unresolved conditions listed here. These next two slides are the conditions that have been resolved, where the applicant worked with these different agencies and was able to come to some resolution and change the conditions so the wording was appropriate and acceptable to both the county agencies and the applicant. So here, it is the Watershed Protection District, Integrated Waste Management Division, the Fire Protection District, and the Air Pollution Control District. So based on the information provided in the staff report and the information presented to you today, the Planning Division recommends that your commission take the following recommended actions. Certify that the Planning Commission has reviewed and considered the staff report and all exhibits thereto, and has considered all comments received during the public comment process. Find that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15301 of CEQA Guidelines for Existing Facilities. Find that the CUP complies with CUP approval standards of the Ventura County Noncoastal Zoning Ordinance, based on substantial evidence presented in Section E of the staff report and the entire record. Grant conditional use permit LU 11-0019, subject to the conditions of approval, and specify that the clerk of the Planning Commission is the custodian, and 800 South Victoria Ventura is the location of the documents and materials that constitute the record of proceedings upon which this decision is based. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
I know, Mike. At this time, I'd like to ask each Planning Commissioner to state for the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter.
I know the property. I've probably driven back and forth in front of that property for the last, at least once a day for the last 25 years, having been raised within two miles of that location. I've come to see it to the point where it's at now. I've never really paid an awful lot of attention to it, other than I knew what was there. However, I did take the time yesterday to go over and take just a close visual look at what I drive by every day. It's amazing when you stop to look. I will say that the landscaping that fronts Victoria is more than adequate, in my opinion, to meet whatever standards were required under the original CUP and certainly under this. And the only thing I could see that was not landscape would have been the north side of the property that fronts on, that touches Victoria and goes westward, where it's chain link fence and some other storage materials, I believe, back there. And actually, and I don't recall this situation, this property, but there's, the property sits at the corner of Teal and Victoria. There's a small storage parcel directly across the street on the corner that visually is certainly much more offensive than Dulham property. I have seen the signage there, and I'm not an expert on signage, but you know, it's nothing, nothing that would be offensive, in my opinion. Certainly not anything that would be out of size, character, or anything else. A very, very limited signage there. That's my...
I have no disclosures?
No disclosures.
I too. Every time I come up here, I drive past it coming up, and I pass it going back, and I concur with Commissioner Rodriguez. It's utterly unremarkable. It's utterly unremarkable. It's invisible.
That's a good thing?
It fits right in. Yeah, it's, there's nothing that pokes my eye out.
I have no disclosures. Does anyone have comments, the staff at this time? Questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I know earlier you said that was a point on when the original CUP was to expire and when you did this modification, the expirations were different. Would it not normally? Had there been a modification, that modification would be tied to the original CUP, which would have the original end date of 2009? Is that normally how it works?
Ideally, ideally, yes. And we tried to find a way for that to be the obvious answer, but we couldn't come to resolution on what was the obvious answer.
Something happened, you're not quite sure.
What's that?
Something happened?
Yes. We don't know why that was. It was probably an error that that was a difference, that the 2005 was not brought forward to 2009.
So what happens when permitees, their CUP expires? What does the county usually do in situations like that?
If the applicant is the person who comes forward, then we would go ahead and we would do exactly what we did in the case of Dulham Nursery. If for some reason there was a complaint, sometimes that is how we find out about it. But this is the typical way that we would go about dealing with an expired permit, that somebody would come forward and apply for a new CUP and we would bring it into conformance with the current standards.
So if nobody complains and the applicant doesn't come forward, they just operate without that or?
In this case, this is how it worked out, simply because the condition compliance was not set up as well as it would now be nowadays. But now we have tickler system in place where applicants are reminded. We actually send out a letter to them, I think it's about a year in advance, letting them know that there's a pending expiration and that they should come in and apply for their permit before it expires.
It's certainly up to them to...
It's their responsibility.
Know when their expiration date is.
Yes.
Yeah. So if in fact somebody does let their CUP expire, then they're exposed to any changes in a CUP of similar natures or there's been changes in condition or law or whatever? Is that correct?
True.
Okay. And it appears to me that, you know, you're bending over backwards to make this happen. Now you say there wasn't a lighting plan or a sign plan. Should there have been one in the original CUP?
No lighting was probably proposed in the original approval, so there would have been no need. The sign plan, there was a zoning clearance issued that did contain some sign information, but it was very vague and didn't conform with what's out there. So we were not able to use that.
And so your view is that they need to bring the lighting plan and the sign plan up to current standards?
Right. We didn't have another choice on those two.
Okay. Thank you.
Nora?
Could you go back to the list that showed those seven? Yeah. So what's, I don't understand what's really sticking. Are you expecting the sign to be moved?
The sign would need to be moved to be in accordance with the noncoastal zoning ordinance.
Does the commission have the discretion to waive that or come up with a different plan?
I believe the issue is that the sign located, is located in the setback, is that correct?
Right, is too tall for being in the setback.
Right. So, and I don't, did you look for the issue of a variance?
No.
For that?
No.
So it looks like it's a pretty simple sign. It would need to be moved outside of the setback. Or we could look at the issue of applying for a variance.
It would be easier to move it than apply for a variance, is that correct? Variances are just really, in my experience on the commission, I can't recall even one variance that was granted. They're just hard to prove that you, that you need one. So it would be easier to move it, is that correct? Move the sign rather than apply for a variance?
Well, the question of ease would be ultimately up to them. I don't know what the cost difference was. I'd imagine that relocating the sign would be cheaper than applying for a variance and going through that process. And it's not even guaranteed that a variance could be approved. As you intimated, you know, there are very specific findings to approve a variance. You must prove that there are unusual circumstances about the property to justify the need to reduce the setbacks. And that's done in the context of the surrounding properties as well and what other properties are allowed to enjoy in that zone. So it would be difficult. And there are a couple of other points I'd like to make to augment this Ozde's presentation. I don't know if it's important, if you would like me to do that now or wait till questions? Mr. Chair.
Mr. Full Law. Any more questions?
I'd like to follow up on what Nora was talking about. So did I hear correctly that the sign is too tall for words at? So could they just shorten it?
Yes, it could go down to, I think, two feet in the site triangle. It would have to be either two feet or eight feet if in the front setback, I believe. But because it's in a site triangle, I would need to look at the code to know exactly what it is, but it...
There's some options there.
There are some options there, yes.
And I did have one, just so I'm clear on something. And recommended actions number four, grant conditional use permit subject to the condition of approval, I assume that's if they get the sign and the lighting thing straightened out?
Right. Those would be prior to zoning clearance conditions that they would need to make.
Anybody have anything further at this time? Did you want, oh, go ahead, Nora.
Yeah, I just wanted to go through each one again, so I had it clear in my head. I understand what the outstanding issue is with the sign plan. The lighting plan, the point is that in the original CUP, there was no, it isn't in there. There isn't a lighting plan in there.
Correct.
Now with a new CUP, there must be a lighting plan. Is there anything beyond taking pictures and writing, this is where the lights are? Is there anything that has to be moved or?
There are standards in the zoning ordinance and one of those is that the lights need to be shrouded so that they don't spill over into offsite areas such as the public right of way.
Uh huh. Is that, is that something that can be done to these existing lighting that's there now?
I imagine that it could be.
Okay. The landscaping and screening, it looked very well screened to me, but I don't know what the specific codes are. What's outstanding with lighting and screening?
With the landscaping plan, we are in agreement that the landscaping is sufficient. In fact, that was one of the reasons that the city of Oxnard back in 79 was able to recommend that the county approve the project. And that was also a big reason why the design, the way the project is set up today could be approved because it is screened so well. The only change that would need to take place is that within the site triangles, the landscaping would need to be reduced to three feet. And that's in the condition as well, in the landscaping condition. So there would need to be some trimming of the landscaping, but there would need to be no new landscaping plan and no additional landscaping put in.
Okay, so trimming is all that's done and it relates to that setback triangle?
Right.
Okay. I don't understand what's outstanding with the consolidation of all approved exhibits and permits.
There's nothing outstanding there.
Okay. I'm just reading the red. Okay. I don't understand why these are unresolved. I'll wait to hear from the applicant.
Anything further?
Just a comment. I have a few questions related to the lighting as well, but I was going to wait for the applicant's presentation.
I was going to reserve my questions too for the... Anything further this time? Did you, do you have additional comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I just wanted to describe to you a couple facets of the standard conditions that we use and a couple of other points to clarify in the record what has occurred to date. And I want to explain, the standard conditions that we use, that was one of the elements of the Get to Excellence program that the Board of Supervisors directed county staff to implement. This is a board sanctioned program. Those conditions were developed over about a year's worth of time. All county staff participated. Legal counsel reviewed all of the conditions. And the purpose of the conditions was to try to make it such that when you have two projects that are the same, we're going to apply the same sorts of conditions to same sorts of situations to reduce the arbitrariness and seemingly different sort of treatment of applicants. It was designed to standardize conditions so that people know upfront what they're getting into when they apply for applications. That's why we work very diligently with applicants, provide them with the draft conditions well before we ever schedule a project for a hearing, to try to alert them as to what we're going to be recommending to your commission or whoever the decision maker is, what conditions should be applied to the project, what they're getting themselves into. And I don't want to make this seem like we slavishly adhere to these conditions. Indeed, they're designed to be tailored to match the situation that is before you. And we do that quite often and as shown, out of all those yellow conditions, that's exactly what we did in this case. So, and we always try to work with applicants as much as possible to try to get them something that works, works for their business plan, so on and so forth. And in that spirit, I want to clarify that that meeting that the Planning Director offered to conduct with applicant, applicant's representative was for free. We were not going to charge any staff time for that meeting. So we have done a great, we have put forth a great deal of effort to try to work and resolve these issues. And it's unfortunate that the applicant declined to conduct that meeting with us because we probably could resolve some of these things and I'll have to hash it out here before your commission. And another point about the conditions, you know, Ms. Ozde is a very competent planner. She prepares those conditions. She then submits them to me. I review them, I send them back, she revises them again. They're then sent to legal counsel. Legal counsel reviews them, they're sent back, then they go to the Planning Director. Planning Director reviews them and sends them back, says they're okay, they're good to go. It's three levels of review. This is not something that we just take willy nilly and just start throwing at projects without thoughtfully considering what conditions are appropriate, given the law and the legal nexus between the project and the laws that apply. So, and one other note about Commissioner Maggie, your question about how we handle situations where a CUP expires. If, the code says if an applicant submits an application for a modification time extension prior to the expiration date of the discretionary permit, they're allowed to continue operating while we process that application. And typically, that's how it happens. And as Ms. Ozde indicated, nowadays what we do, we have a tickler system, we have a computer system that alerts us to when a CUP is going to expire and we send out a notice to the property owners approximately a year in advance, say, hey, by the way, permit's going to expire, you need to file your modification time extension application if you intend to continue beyond the existing expiration date for the permit. So we do put forth the effort. We are being proactive and we do take it very seriously and want to alert people. We don't want to get them in a catch, gotcha situation. We're trying to notify them, help them out. And I think, you know, the record demonstrates that we did do that. We did not open up a violation case, even though we're alerted to the fact that they're operating without a CUP. There is no CUP in effect, period. But we're not going to take any enforcement actions because they've done a good job of coming forth and working with us to try to get the permit such that they do operate in accordance with the ordinance. And we're not going to take any enforcement actions against them. But I must admit, it seems to be the situations where we are lenient that we tend to get burned in the end, because that's when we find people do not comply and they start fighting with us and then we're stuck in this awkward situation where we don't have a violation on file. We've been trying to work with applicants to get them into compliance and then they back out the last minute and then we don't have anything to point to and we're in awkward legal position. We don't feel that's happening in this situation. We've done a good job coming forth and trying to get their permit and we hope that we can resolve this, get through, get the permit effectuated and move on. That's all we want to do.
I just have one thing to add on to that. I wasn't made aware of the issue only through Supervisor Zaragoza's office that called and asked me what the issue was. I was unfamiliar with the case. So Supervisor Zaragoza's office, I think rightly, sent the applicant's representative and their attorney to work with the Planning Department and to work with the Planning Director. And so I immediately offered them a meeting after I sat down and chatted with staff because I could see that there was a lot of give already and the things that they had, I wanted to understand from a, from an overall perspective, how these were going to, how these were going to harm their client. I couldn't understand that. My planner couldn't, my manager couldn't, my county council couldn't. And so these are things that we wanted to understand for a, for the future, to saying, are those conditions that we've written, the landscaping, the lighting and the site plan, such that we need to look at them holistically for the county, right? So I, they agreed to a meeting. I set a meeting for free with Winson, our discretionary permit coordinator, with Dan, with the planner, with myself, to understand their concerns because I think a lot of that needs to be done face by face. You can't do that in one email. And so I really wanted to say whether our standard conditions need to be changed, what harm that was causing them. And that meeting was declined. So we never did get to that discussion. So I just wanted to let you know that that was the perspective, that these standard conditions, I wanted to understand whether we needed to change them since there was so much time and energy and effort and legal counsel put into developing them. I wanted to see what the issue was. So I didn't get that meeting.
Any further questions of staff? Then I'll open the public hearing and we'll hear from the applicant. I have three cards. Your choice who comes first. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Thank you. I choose to come first. I'm Linda Dulham. We live at 2320 Peninsula Road in Oxnard. And I'm here on behalf of my husband, John, today, who I want everybody to know, has been for nearly four months with his foot in the air at home. So he has not left the house other than doctor's appointments. That has impeded a little bit. So I'm feeling a little bit like the bad guy here, so I kind of want to shake that off and like...
You didn't break his foot, did you?
No, I did not. I've thought about it on occasion, but I did not do it. Thank you very much, yes. Let me see here. We're here to try to ask you to solve a dilemma that we have. And for those of you who know John, he is a very exacting, everything has to be perfect. If you drove onto the property, there is not a weed. I mean, this guy is real exacting. Well, about a year and a half ago, his staff was in the office going through files and inadvertently discovered that John had a lapsed CUP. And after the spiral through the ceiling and he came back down again, he always had in mind from his CUP that the county would contact him and say, you know, it's pending, you've got six months out, come and visit us, get your checkbook out, pay your new fees and it'll be done. And that's what it said in his CUP. It clearly says it expires in '09 and, you know, the county has the obligation of letting it, letting you know. That's the way that he read it and that's what he had in his mind. He does not have a stack of sheets that say what the county rules are, saying that the owner has the obligation. He did not have that. He only had the CUP, which stated to him, as you can see in the form, that he would be notified. Backing up for just a minute, the Dulhams came up here from West LA in 1952 and his first nursery was on F Street in Oxnard. And then he moved to 195 in 1964, 1963. And when they wanted to expand, expand the nursery, that's where the CUP came into play in 1979. And in there, as Andrea has laid out, it does allow for a two times enlargement or twice as large as the nursery is. And John has just never done that over the years, never found it necessary. But he is very chagrined at all of this and feels, let me back up, I have so many things to say, like the sign. If you go down Victoria, for us to put a sign outside the fence, if you drive back and forth, I'm sure you've seen the semi trucks that are also pulled off to the side, both back by the glass house and down by us, looking for Teo Club and the Higis primarily. It's real narrow there. There's a ditch outside the fence, this, this space, and then the roadway. And everybody's going down Victoria at 60 miles an hour. So we're happy to change the sign, but we need to carefully consider, we'll lower the sign, all we want to do is have an address number out there. We don't even need to tell people because we don't have people coming in to buy plants from us. It's not a public operation. So we just really need our address. So we're happy, but it will have to have special considerations because the semis pull in, they're down looking at their maps or their GPS or whatever, trying to find Teo Club, which is of course just 300 or 400 feet away from where they're parked right there. And we were happy to, the lighting thing, the lighting has been there since, since John put it in in 1979. So if we're out of compliance now, he's in compliance with the airport, he knows that. He's in compliance with everybody that he's checked with as far as shielding and all of that. This is a guy who really pays attention to detail. And even though it's sounding now like he's wearing a black hat in this room, he's not. He's a very detailed kind of a guy who is really trying to just get a CUP to continue on and operating wholesale nursery business. And there are no changes. We haven't hired any architects. Nothing's happening. We're not building restrooms or walkways or anything. It's all just very... It's all just very, "Just help us out. We will comply with the sign, we'll make some..." And as far as a free meeting, a free meeting, we appreciate a staff-free meeting. But for John to come, number one, he couldn't come, but number two, for a free meeting, it's not free to us. It's not free to us. This has been a very, John has spent over $60,000, $60,000 since this thing came up over the last year, for fees and consultants and legal fees and all the things that have gone on. So, but he's happy to do it. He just needs the CUP. And he will comply, and I'm here to tell you that today. Dennis Cutler, legal. Tom Figg are at council. Any questions of me?
Could we ask a question? So, you're okay with lowering the sign as long as you're able to still have your address?
We need to have them be able to see, because the speed going down Victoria...
And I understand, but lowering, it's okay with you?
Sure it is.
And the trimming that has to be done in order to, and that's fine too?
I am the tree trimmer. I have never heard word one about taking them down. I thought I was doing a fine job. I would be happy to. That's one of my jobs. I love trimming trees.
Okay.
So, just let me know what I need to do. I'm happy to trim trees.
Okay. And on the lighting plan, you understand that there's some kind of retrofit?
I do.
On the light fixtures?
Yes.
And then, that sounds like it's it. That sounds like it's it, and that doesn't sound anywhere near $60,000.
Well, it certainly has been a very expensive retrofit on lights, hasn't it?
Excuse me just a second. I didn't hear from county that that's the only issue, that that lighting plan incorporates whatever the new requirements are. There was just a discussion about retrofitting. Are there additional requirements under the ordinance now?
No. No, there are requirements in terms of the heights of the poles to which the lights are affixed, but besides that, no. Thank you.
And just to address the issue of the billing really quick, I mean, I did run the billing before I came here, and the planning department's billing, that the time that we ran the invoices was $7,300 at the time we ran it last month, so maybe it's different now.
Well, we have paid $12,000 to the County of Ventura, $12,305 to the County of Ventura. So, that's just the figure that I'm coming with. I don't know where it's gone.
Right. Well, Public Works fire, APCD, that too, but I just wanted to put it in context, $60,000 compared to what the planning department was spending.
I understand.
Thank you.
I have a couple, excuse me, I have a couple of questions, and I thought you were going to have, you know, a manager or somebody come explain what was going on out there.
Yes, I do.
The report, you do? Oh, great, I'll save them.
Okay.
Morning, Mr. Cutler.
Good morning, Chairman, planning commission members. Again, my congratulations to you for becoming the chairman. I'm not sure that I would want the job, and I'm a little embarrassed that our item cleared the room.
Would you just please state your name?
I will. Dennis Cutler, K-U-T-T-L-E-R, 300 Esplanade Drive, here to speak on the Dulham matter. And just to put it in context, I've been the Dulhams' attorney for over 12 years, know the operation well. Linda's the wife, but I'm the attorney, and the way she describes her husband is spot-on. I did want to address your legal authority, and we're here today because you have the legal authority to make decisions based on your discretion as you seem fit under this situation. Now, what am I talking about? If I was brand-new to this process, I would think the county is my best friend. I mean, my goodness, everybody is set up to take my application and do everything right and operate in this spirit of cooperation. And I hope you know that in the real world, that isn't the perception. And so, I would like you, for the next few minutes, to be the applicant. I don't know if any of you have been an applicant before, but Mr. Dulham is an applicant. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'd like you to indulge me on this request. What you heard from the staff is, they're defensive. I mean, I get that. We've said some things about the process that if I were them, I'd want you to know that it really isn't that way. So, I'm hopeful that after we close the public hearing, and if there is discussion with the staff, and we hear something that we would like to address to you, that you allow us re-entry into the process, because it is the Dulhams' application. So, I hope you would afford us that procedural right if you possibly can. Now, what is the history? In 2010, John Dulham found out his conditional use permit had expired. He calls his attorney, says, "Dennis, what do I do?" I said, "Well, you have a couple of choices. You could do nothing, sit on your hands, and sooner or later, they'll find out. How, when, or where, I don't know. Or you could be proactive and apply for an extension, but if you do so, I recommend you hire a consultant that knows the ins and outs of process, because that's the only way you're going to be able to save money." I suggested Tom Figg. He was hired, and he is the gentleman you'll hear after me, who put the application together. Tom Figg is an insider. He has been over here in government planning departments. He has been hired by government planning departments to take on very complicated land use issues. I mean, he knows what he's doing. Now, are our recommendations the ones you should approve, or are the standard conditions so important that you must follow them? That's what I'd like you to consider over the next few minutes. The impasse, it is real. The planning process can't quite figure out why we have this impasse. The real world has the impasse because of what were perceived as threats. Now, every five years, in the conditional use permit, there was a requirement, a shell, that the planning director review the site and the conditions. Never happened. Somewhere, somewhere in the law, there has to be an equitable extension of the existing CUP, because think about what would have happened if that process would have been followed regarding lighting and signage. Somebody would have said, "Oh, my goodness, your sign's too high." So, it would have been fixed in the process of the 30 years. "Oh, my gosh, you don't have a four-inch shroud on your light, you only have a three." Well, it would have been fixed during that process. Now, bear with me, because I want you to contrast that with these standard conditions. But back to the impasse, along the way, as the staff was working with our consultant, a couple of things happened that really put the fear into Mr. Dulham. There was an oblique reference in an email that the staff was extending a courtesy to Mr. Dulham because they were not filing a zone violation. We're the ones that came forward to apply. Secondly, they insisted for a period of time that we really had expired in 2005, and we were dazzled at that, because on the face, it was May 2009. Well, I mean, if they can't figure that out pretty quickly, you sort of ask yourself, "What's going on?" And then, when we started recommending some changes to the standard conditions which would apply to this project, the response was, "We can't do that, because that'll jeopardize our what? Standard conditions?" So, that is the atmosphere that was created in this process. I received a phone call in my office from Ms. Pearlheart requesting a meeting, because she just said, "Dennis, I'm just, I don't, I'm confused. I don't know what it is that you're after." And I said, "Well, let me check with Mr. Dulham and the consultant, and when would you like to meet?" We tentatively set a date. I said, "I'll get back to you." I checked with Mr. Dulham and the consultant, and they made a decision that unless there was some ability of the county staff to work with us, that we'd rather present this to the discretionary decision makers. And we declined meeting, and we said, "If you change your direction on these issues, we're happy to meet." Well, they didn't. We haven't, and we're here before you. Please take a look at condition two, and let me just read it. If I can find it quickly, Dennis. Okay, Tom, I may need your help on this. Oh, here it is. Okay. Again, if you have the hat of the applicant on, and you read condition two, and this is about the site. Well, you saw the site. It's built out. Everything that anybody would want to know about the site is in the exhibits attached to the application. So, here's the condition that Mr. Dulham would be faced with. I guess this is the standard condition. It's under requirement, required improvements for CUP under timing. Fourth bold paragraph. Prior to the issuance of a zone clearance for use inauguration, whatever that means, the permitee shall submit all final development plans to the planning division for review and approval. Unless the planning director and public works director allow the permitee to provide financial security and final executed agreement approved as deformed by county council, what in the world is that? Which ensures completion of such improvements, the permitee shall complete all required improvements prior to the issuance of a zone clearance for use inauguration. Can you understand that in the sense of what Dulham Nursery has applied for? Now, contrast that to what Mr. Dulham is requesting. The permitee shall ensure that all required onsite improvements for the project, including structures, paving, parking, and landscaping, are with the approved plans stamped Exhibit Those are our plans. That should be the document that the zone clearance goes checkmarked. Now, I can hear the staff saying, "Oh, well, you know, we wouldn't require Mr. Dulham to hire an architect or an engineer or, you know, submit all, we just wouldn't do that." Well, you know, I'd be careful. So, that's a detail, an excruciating detail, but I'm hopeful that you'll grasp why we're here before you today. And our request is for you, in exercising your discretion, to be fair to the Dulhams, to provide as much certainty that his business will not be shut down pending whatever it is, the magic piece that allows him to continue business. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name's Tom Figg. I reside at 204 Willbrook Drive in Port Wayne, not too far from where the Dulhams reside. First, I want to acknowledge and compliment your case planner, Andrea. She's been great, has operated with due diligence, in good faith, and it's no fault of her own that we have come to this point where we can't seem to close the deal. Let's talk a little bit, I'm getting a little off my, kind of my agenda, but a number of issues have come up, and I think it's important for you to get a perspective. I like Dennis's thought of change hats here and understand an applicant's perspective of this process, and why Mr. Dulham, as an applicant, is so insistent that these changes be made. If you look at the original conditions of approval back in 1979, this is your plan, okay? And we talk about $60,000, and now we take a look at exhibits, what, 1 through 17, none of which have been prepared by an architect. I have largely done that, trying to take information of record to minimize the cost and expense and time involved in producing these kinds of documents. But that just starts to give you a sense of, where does it stop? So, the staff is asking for a sign plan, what, by an architect? A landscape plan by a landscape architect? Electrical plan? What are the standards? Are we going to show every light bulb in the building, outside the building? Where? Is it just for the parking standards? There is no guidance as to what the expectation of staff is. And it's troubling to me, as a professional planner, is that then when I go to the counter to get a zoning clearance, what does this mean? Do I need to have a plan from an electrical engineer? And what is the extent of the lighting that needs to be shown? And the electrical conduit and whatever else? What are the standards? And then, why do you need all this information? What's the basis for saying it's a good plan or a bad plan? Now, your zoning clearance process is supposed to be a ministerial exercise. It's a checklist. How can you have a checklist when the standards are not known? And that's true with all these supplemental plans that are being requested. Now, we heard a little bit more today than we have in the past, and that we have a problem with a sign. Well, do we really have a problem with a sign? I heard several of your commissioners saying, "It's benign. We don't have a problem. We don't see any issues out there." Okay? The same is true with the landscaping. And nobody's ever complained about light that might spill over on adjacent properties. You know, the airport authority is happy. Why? Why do we need to do that much more effort, particularly when the standards are not defined? Now, let's talk just a second about the signage itself, and Mrs. Dulham's already really kind of addressed it. If you're familiar with that frontage, it is very difficult to find the entry to the Dulhams' property. If you don't have a sign like it's posted today, I can't imagine you being able to make it any better or worse, but if you relocate it, then you're going to have people driving all over the place. So, I ask you to think about the common sense aspects of what's being requested of you. If you're not offended by what you see out there, it's non-conforming, and allow it to continue, and don't require additional changes in plans. That's really what we're asking here. The other thing that we're asking in a global way is, don't penalize the Dulhams, or let this kind of read over to other applicants in a similar circumstance, that the prospect exists, that I can be given a notice of violation because I inadvertently found out that my permit expired when a county was obligated to do periodic reviews. Not, and that's not a discretionary act, it is required. And staff has defaulted to a code section that's very general, very broad, but your condition of approval is extremely explicit. And had the county carried out its duties, we wouldn't be here. So, all we're asking for is give us the same kind of treatment... So all we're asking for is give us the same kind of treatment that would otherwise have been given to an applicant who did apply timely before a renewal was necessary, before an expiration had occurred. Give us the same courtesy, because it was the planning staff that failed to allow us that opportunity. And so I don't know how anybody could be threatened by the language we've suggested as it relates to Condition Number One, and allowing the permit to remain valid while a zoning clearance is obtained. Now, I hadn't intended to walk through each and every other changes, because I know this is kind of minutia, and I'm somewhat embarrassed that we have to carry forward this discussion to you. We shouldn't have to. And I've tried to outline to you the justification, the legal and the code sections that give you the authority to do what we're asking you to do. I have one last thing that I was troubled to hear, that, "Oh, we don't need a landscape plan. So why do we need to change the language of the landscape condition?" Well, let's take a look at what that condition says. And this is the middle of that condition number, I think it's 2018. Okay, it's in the middle. Under documentation. It says, "Prior to issuance of a zoning clearance for use inauguration, the permittee shall submit a landscape and planning plan, resets specifications, a maintenance program, prepared by a state-licensed landscape architect." That's what the condition says. And what we heard today is that, "No, no, you don't have to submit. We're okay." Well, that's what we're asking you to say, is accept the planning you already required us to install and is in conformance. That's all we're asking. It isn't as if the sorts of things and changes that we're suggesting are extraordinary. It's trying to bring certainty to the process and reduce the unnecessary cost and time to complete the process. I keep saying one more thing. The problem we have, and I think Mr. Cutler addressed it, is that different staff, over different periods of time, interpret conditions differently. When we started this exercise, I met with your planning facilitator, permit facilitator, and said, you know, "We've got an issue here. We have a CUP that's expired, and we have a farmworker dwelling that was a modification of that original CUP. How do we best proceed?" Well, I think what we do is we separate them. Get a zone clearance for the farmworker's dwelling, and then come in for a CUP for the balance of property. Well, off I went. That's what we did. Came back in, got the zoning clearance, added additional time and expense to the process, and then was told, when we applied for the CUP, "Oh, no, the farmworker dwelling needs to be part of the CUP because it's accessory use to the operation." And that's okay. I'm not mad. You know, it's just more money, more time. It would have been nice to have known that going in. But that is an example of, you hear staff saying, "We have no intent to, you know, bring the hammer down and issue a notice of violation. We have no intent to do anything other than relocate your sign. We have nothing, you know, we have no concerns about your landscaping, but we still want three sets of plans from a state-licensed landscape architect." Please, just put your applicant hat on and say, "Gosh, maybe they have a point here. Maybe we ought to clarify some of this stuff." So I departed from my outline. I certainly have a lot more to talk about if you'd like. I'll conclude by saying, "This is a rare occasion for an applicant to ask for less, not more." Mr. Dullum was authorized to build 20 more greenhouses under his original CUP, which could have been extended, had we been given the courtesy that our CUP had expired. So we have an applicant that's asking for less. We want to de-intensify the use of the property that we were already given authority to do. So I'll leave it at that. And if you want to get into the particulars of the words, I'll be glad to. But hopefully, you've had a chance to look at how we're setting this up and the justification for so doing. And again, you have the discretion to fix it. And nonconforming provisions is the avenue that you can take on some of these matters. And just ask yourself, "Are you offended with the conditions that exist out there to require changes?" With that, I'll conclude. And certainly, if you have any questions, all three of us are here to try to answer them.
I have a question for you, sir. Maybe I misunderstood the documentation, but I thought that you had gotten approval for the farmworker housing, separate and apart from the CUP. That's not correct?
That's correct. We did. But then, when we filed for the CUP, we were told that that had to be incorporated into the CUP.
And what did that do to you?
Oh, there's no harm or foul gun, but my point in telling you that is that in our very circumstance, we have a situation where people interpret things differently over time by different staff. That was my point.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Mr. Figg, just for clarity, since both you and the counselor have asked for equity, I just want to make it clear that if the county had done its due diligence in the five-year reviews, and they had found the sign being nonconforming at that time, and the landscaping plan had not been provided, that you would have had to perform under those conditions and had to go through the expense of providing it. Is that correct?
Unless we chose to appeal the determination, which is becoming more and more frequent, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I keep hearing, and I appreciate all the comments, and I think both staff and the applicant have worked diligently and expeditiously to try to get this issue resolved before it became an enforcement issue that was discovered in whatever way it might have been discovered. But the reality is, and we keep talking about it in the real world, yeah, but the real world is today. You know, I became employed local government in '66, and left 10, 11 years ago. And the real world then, when I began, and the real world when I left, evolved, and with technology, the real world changed, as it's changed since I left. And I, you know, I read the documents, and I see the CUPs, and the five-year review issue, and that's all well and good and true. In the real world, obviously, it didn't happen. But changes have occurred, and today, there is a tickler system in place, and there is documentation in the CUPs that give clear notice as to whose responsibility is to do what. Certainly, if I was driving a vehicle, and I allowed the license to expire, and found myself being stopped and/or cited for it, and I said, "Well, I never knew. It wasn't my responsibility. It's the state's responsibility to send me a notice of renewal." The reality is, I'm still in noncompliance for not having a valid driver's license. So I appreciate the argument, but in the real world, things are not always the way we document them, unfortunately. I wish they were. But there is no unfortunate issue here, so, you know, I hope we can get past all of that.
Well, there is a potential enforcement issue, as has been pointed out by your staff. As long as we don't have a CUP, we're in violation. And we're suggesting that since the county had a compulsory obligation to keep on top of this permit, had we been advised in advance, and we could have applied for renewal before expiration, the code, your code, the Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, grants the kind of latitude we're asking for. Tell us that we have some breathing room, and you're not going to shut down a business that's been operating for 50 years. That's all we're asking. And the justification for giving us that latitude is that any other applicant that had been advised and came forward before expiration would have been given that same latitude.
I have a question about lighting. Can you respond to that?
Depends on how detailed it is.
Well, the report indicates there's 24-hour security on-prem.
Correct.
And who is that provided by?
It's onsite through the farmworker dwelling.
Okay. And there is lighting out there at night, at least.
Security lighting.
Security-type lighting. I'm not going to speak to the issue of light intrusion or invasion beyond the property. I know that traveling up and down Victoria, and I've done that on more occasions than I could ever be able to articulate. I've done it both day and night. And lighting is not great on the frontage, except for the intersections at Teal Club and Doris up the street. And I concur with Mrs. Dullum that the shoulder of the road is rather limited, which would create a problem, potential problem, for a commercial vehicle stopping along the side of the road to try to find an address. However, I also notice it when I drive it at night. I've seen lighting out there in the greenhouses. Is that, and I guess, I don't know if that's part of, and as I look at the diagrams that were submitted in the application, the pictures submitted in the application, they show the interior greenhouses, both with and without lighting. And I guess, in my mind, I'm asking myself, is that what appears to be lighting for nighttime purposes, for continued, you know.
Propagation.
Or growth at night? Or is that to help any temperature issues caused by frost to warm the greenhouses? Because when it does happen, and I couldn't tell you when and how often it happens, but when I have noticed, I mean, it pulls your attention from the roadway, even though it's, you know, pretty much setback. It does pull your attention from the roadway. What's with the lighting?
I had this conversation with Mr. Dullum because somebody asked me, at staff, that very question, and I didn't know. And the lighting that may exist in those greenhouses are not for the purposes of propagation or maintaining temperature. My guess would be, what limited lighting is there is security.
There is no lighting in the greenhouses. The greenhouse is not yet.
Okay. Would you please come up to the issue? That's all right. Say your name again, please.
Sorry. There is no lighting in the interior of the greenhouses. There are only the exterior posts and down on the buildings. It might look like that in the picture of reflection of the glass.
Yeah, I was just referring to, I guess it's your applicant pictures. It identifies what appears to be building, well, I can't tell, 3 and 5, maybe. Shows the interior of two greenhouses with plants, ceilings inside. One of them clearly doesn't appear to have anything indicating lighting, while the other one appears to have a couple of objects suspended from the ceiling that appear to be some sort of lighting.
Well, that could be from the, they have traveling water booms. You might be seeing part of it, and they've got various pieces that hang down that travel up and down the center of the greenhouse. But I intercepted a call from staff, and then asked John, "Do we light the inside?" He said, "We have no interior lighting."
Okay.
So I had.
And as I heard, I think there is no retail sales that occur here. It's all wholesale.
That's correct.
Contract-type stuff.
If I might, Mr. Commissioner, so what if there was lighting in the greenhouses? And I say that in kind of a, think about it again as an applicant. You're asking me to submit a lighting plan. Well, does that mean you can pass judgment on where the lights can go on the property? That's the problem I have in having these open-ended requests for documents without really a roadmap. Where is this going to lead us to?
And I'm not suggesting that, and that's not what I'm.
Oh, no, but I wanted to point out.
The fact that I drive up and down that road at night, and I do, and there is lighting. And while Mrs. Dullum, as stated, her husband, has made the effort to be in compliance of everything, including the airport, which is basically immediately adjacent to the property across the street, and it satisfies their expectations and requirements, I don't doubt that. I'm just, you know, from my perspective, we're dealing with Non-C coastal Zoning Commission issues as opposed to FAA issues. And so in my mind, I have that inquiry.
Anything else?
Yeah. Send her. Anyone else?
Well, we'll be here if you have anything.
I think we'll need you. I don't see anybody here in opposition. And I've heard, nor have I heard, that anyone has tendered any objection. Is that correct? I have a question of county council. We have an expired permit. We have an applicant who's operated successfully for decades. We have no objections. We understand and appreciate that they have met with the county, and that we're very close to a resolution of the matter, that the matters I've heard in issue don't seem terribly significant. And they're basically saying to us, "We would like to be treated like an applicant who has not had a permit expire, and we would like to have some assurance that at some point in time, someone will not serve a notice of violation on us." And I understand the permit's expired, and I understand that they want to fall back on the existing permit that doesn't exist anymore. Is there any reason why we can't have some form of agreement, holding them to some performance conditions, that they will not be held in violation, as long as they're pursuing the Performance bond, God knows what? I don't know. But I understand and appreciate why they don't like this open-ended situation being, and I would be in their position, too. I'd want a resolution matter if I could. Is there any, do we have any leeway here?
And through the chair, thank you, Chair Anstott, and to the commission. That's a good question about going to the very same things that I think the applicant has raised through its legal counsel, which is legal authority, and this whole question of potentially being in violation. And I think there's really something very important here in the Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance that is being lost here, is that the planning director, by board-approved Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, has what is called enforcement discretion. And they give that very carefully. Enforcement discretion is found in almost every regulatory statute, and is given to the head of that agency to apply the rules and regulations as he or she sees fit, given the facts and circumstances presented to them. In this case, I think the manager in this case, Mr. Clement, and planning director, Kim Pearlheart, have stated very clearly that they were exercising that enforcement discretion on not filing an NOV when they very well could have. And the enforcement discretion is something that is not to be looked at as simply their word. They are acting as agents of the board to implement the Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, and it's given to them for a reason, so that they can exercise due judgment under the circumstances. Because, as we've heard today, situations change all the time, and every situation is different. And I think it's no different than in law enforcement. Even police officers, captains, sergeants, they all exercise a certain degree of discretion, and it's granted to them so that they can use that judgment carefully. With all that being said, I think the Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance is filled with standards and restrictions as to what the legal authority of your planning commission can do. And I just want to go real quickly to that section in the Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, 8111-4.2, decision options. And the decision options that are before you, which were called into question by legal counsel for the applicant, is that the authority, your authority, the planning commission, has the authority to impose, modify, wholly or partly the requests being reviewed, and that such conditions and limitations as it deems necessary to assure that all applicable policies and specific requirements of this zoning ordinance are effectuated. And so, again, not wanting to make this a civics class, the planning commission is an enumerated powers body. You only have the powers that are granted to you within the framework of that. And so when Kim said that, you know, the sign is within the setback, there's a very specific regulation, nothing like that in the setback. If it is in the setback, it's got to be a certain height. That's a black-and-white objective issue. And I beg to differ with counsel for applicant, who continually asks you to put on the hat of the applicant, or to put yourself in the shoes of the applicant. And again, I don't know how large Mr. Dullum is, but that'd be hard to do under any circumstances, and any adjudicatory body is not asked to stand in the shoes of the applicant. You are the adjudicatory body. Your main task is to take the law that is given to you and apply it to the facts. No one's asking you to be subjective. No one's asking you to be an advocate for Kim and her staff. And no one's asking you to be an advocate for the applicant and their desires and their interests. You are a neutral body. And so I really want to emphasize the fact that you're not a body of equity, as in Old English law. You are a body of law, and that you are not to be put in the position of trying to advocate or think like the applicant. The application is before you. I think you've heard staff very clearly. Now, that's a long answer to that one question, but that was a can opener question that really opened up a lot of things there. So if I could just take this one opportunity and say that there was this question about impasse, and there was an oblique reference in the email about a courtesy of no NOV, again, what is staff saying there? "I'm exercising my enforcement discretion." And I think that what we're seeing here is that you're what we're seeing here is that you're seeing a gift, an exercise of regulatory grace, if I could use that term, and people saying, no, it's not regulatory grace. It's actually regulatory subversion, and that I'm here to somehow take away something from you by subterfuge. I just don't see that in the situation here. And so I just wanted to just address those very strong comments that I've heard from applicant's presentation, and then to go down and read the conditions and use terms like, well, whatever that means, or what in the world is that? You know, I think in the world of law, I think all attorneys can make, you know, a mangled mess out of any bit of English language. But I think when it's clear on its face, and courts say it all the time, plain meaning, plain meaning. What do the words say? And the words don't lie. They're very simple, and I don't think that they're subject to a lot of interpretation and mangling, or even the standard term of whatever in this world. So I just wanted to make that clear, and just make sure that your planning commission understands the footing that you stand on, and it's a solid one, because you stand on the non-coastal zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
I found that very clear. I found that very clear, that we go with the, with the powers that are enumerated, and our interpretation, and where we have discretion, where we do not. I found that very helpful.
Well, I, oh, go ahead, sir.
Would staff like to respond to anything that the two consultants for the applicant has said regarding where we are in the impasse?
Before you do that, I have a question. Use inauguration, that's obviously in conflict. I understand the definitional issues going on here. That doesn't really mean what it says. But when I look at the CUP, it says something's going to happen before use inauguration. That's obviously not the situation here. And I can understand why that creates a problem and adds to the other problem. Why do we have that language? Why do we have to have that language?
I'll defer to the planning director on that, on the use and the meaning of that phrase. I do want to add one last thing to my comments there, is that there's a case called Topanga Association, and that's a case out of Los Angeles County. And it's the seminal case on the fact that anything that you do as a decision-making body has to be supported by findings, and findings have to be based on substantial evidence. So Mr. Clement already pointed out the nexus, and that is very important. But nexus, and substantial evidence, and findings all go together. So even though you have some discretion wholly or partly to amend or modify the decision before you, it's got to be supported by findings.
Right. And Chair Anstott, so I'd like to address the issue of the zoning clearance and the purpose of, and that is, it's clearly spelled out in section 8111-1.1.1, right? And it says the zoning clearance is in the purpose of. And it gives a lot of, a lot of discussion about it, but at the last paragraph, it says more than one zoning clearance may be required and issued for the same property, and one zoning clearance may be issued for multiple purposes. And then it talks about the purposes that it does. A zoning clearance is required prior to any of the following actions occurring. And one of those actions is inauguration of a use of land. So the county clearly says that there is not a CUP. There is not a live entitlement on this product, on this property. So even though we see all of the buildings are existing, and we've all said this is no big deal, you still have to inaugurate that use on the property. So even if your planning commission approves that use today, there are six or seven things that need to be done, just like every single entitlement the county issues. And in order to make those, check those boxes and make sure that that's happening, that use inauguration zoning clearance is that checkbox. We've checked condition 17, condition 21. Yes, we have everything we need. Here is your use inauguration zoning clearance. And that is how we do compliance at the county. So we use that use inauguration as our point in time to saying, somebody looked at those conditions and they have been met. So it's a very important tool for us, and it's a term of art, and just the fact by, it seems an uncomfortable language for the applicant, use inauguration, because the use is already existing out there. But I think that we've said that, Andrea's said that to him, we've said that in emails. It's a term of art in the code, and here is how it's used. And so it, to me, it's very clear, and it's a very important distinction.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I have a few responses to some of what I heard from Mr. Fig. The first, in the landscaping condition, which is condition 18, page 203 of your packet. And he was questioning that we are in fact asking for landscape plans prior to the issuance of a zoning clearance, and he was focusing on the timing section. But if you would just have a look to the documentation section immediately above, fourth line down, middle of the cent, or middle of the paragraph, it begins, "If in the event that the permutee must augment or replace existing landscaping and/or irrigation systems in order to meet the requirements of the landscape design criteria and/or general plan goals, policies, and programs policy, prior to the issuance of a zoning clearance for use inauguration, the permutee shall submit a landscape and planting plan," and it goes on to describe what all would need to be submitted. But in this case, we have already agreed to rely upon the landscaping plan that was submitted as part of the original CUP. And as long as everything is in conformance with that plan, there should be no question as to what the expectation here is, or when that replacement augmentation would take place. So that was the first comment. Next is the lighting standards. I'm not sure where the confusion is as to what would be required here, because condition 19, page 204, describes what the standards are, what would be compliant with the non-coastal zoning ordinance. And also, one of the reasons that we would require an engineer to provide that information is so that we can ensure that everything is according to the zoning ordinance. We're not experts in this type of topic. We don't have electrical engineering degrees. We don't review that. We rely on the stamp of the person who is providing that, and we go forward with that. So as long as this condition is provided to that person who provides the plan, then we can be assured that this condition has been met. So there should be no, no real question as to what the requirements are there. And finally, this was just a, just a quick clarification. The farmworker dwelling unit was in fact a modification to the original CUP. It was modification number one to CUP 3873. So I just wanted to make that quick clarification. I don't know if that becomes important here, but that question was asked. So those were the responses that I had. If Dan or Kim has anything to add?
Just a couple of very, very minor points to add, just to kind of ride Ms. Prielhart's coattails. In regards to the zoning clearance and the purpose of it, there's also another section of the ordinance, it's section 8111-4.7 regarding the expiration of a discretionary entitlement. And that's keyed off of the zoning clearance issuance. In other words, it reinforces what Ms. Prielhart read to you with regards to, okay, in order to, after you get the approval of the discretionary entitlement, you must obtain the zoning clearance in order to effectuate that approval. And once again, it is a ministerial type of action where you just go through each one of the conditions and provide they satisfy each of the conditions. Boom, you get your zoning clearance, it effectuates approval, and the discretionary permit does not expire. That's one point. The other point I wanted to make is if you look at your board packet, pages 203 through 205, there are conditions 18, 19, 20. That's for landscaping, lighting, and signage. I'm kind of beside myself about the comment that we don't know where the authority comes from for us to make these requirements. What are the standards that we use? You've got close to a page worth of text for each one of these conditions, and within each one of these conditions, there are direct references to either the general plan policy, the landscape design guidelines, or the zoning ordinance section, which sets forth the requirements that give us the authority and require us to place these conditions on this project. If there's any question beyond, about what is required after reading these conditions, applicant's more than welcome to come talk to us about cave, still unclear. We work with applicants to try to clarify things. If you go to the landscape guidelines, it sets forth in excruciating detail, all the way down to the type of water fixtures that can be used in landscaping, to provide applicants with direction as to what the requirements are. Once again, if there's any confusion, the more welcome to come to us. We'll clarify to the best of our ability. Just a couple of minor points, and I'll leave it at that.
Anything further?
Mrs. Dullum, do you have any rebuttal to staff comments? Are you, anything further?
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and begin deliberations. What's your pleasure?
I don't wish to be rude or disrespectful, but this seems like a mountain out of a mo hill to me. This seems very, very clear to me. I feel terrible that there is this sense that, that, that there was a threat made, that you, that your business felt threatened by, no, we won't issue a notice of violation. I think that sometimes this language that planners, land use attorneys use is very dense, and if you're, and if you're not familiar with these terms of art, it can seem overwhelming, and I really find that regrettable. I think that there's a lot of philosophy that, that people have, general philosophy about government, that somehow has, has been, I don't even know, crystallized? I don't even know the right adjective to use, or verb to use, to say that someone with a general philosophy that, you know, government should get out of the way of business and let businesses do what they do. And, you know, why do we get hung up on all these things, all these things? But what the county has endeavored to do is make the standards extremely clear and have less of a, it's who you know, and, you know, this, this, I don't know, a chumminess that you need to have, you know, to be an insider. You don't need to be an insider. Everything is extremely explicit, and that it's not clear, it isn't for a lack of effort. It seems to me that the issues that were outstanding seem very minor and fixable. It sounds like you're exceedingly willing to do whatever it is, but that you've been either advised, or you feel still that, that your livelihood in this business that's been contributing to the economic vitality of our county is under threat. I don't see it that way at all. I, like I said, I drive right by it, and I think, awesome, great, no problem. If there's a minor thing with lowering the sign, a minor thing with the landscaping, all of these are just kind of like, I don't know, they're not insurmountable. It just seems like a mountain has been made out of a mo hill. It, it's, it's very troubling that, that, and I don't direct this personally, it's you two gentlemen, but in general, there appear to be people who are pot stirrers, and you end up paying for services, and you get advice that's bad advice. We've had other projects before this commission where it's very clear that the applicant has, has been misused. And so I would be in support of the recommended actions to get this show on the road, and understand that, you know, we've heard the, the statements that the applicant has made about her willingness to do these things with the expectation that there's an end. It's very clear that there's an end, and that's what I would support, the recommended actions in the staff report on page 174.
Go ahead.
For the record, you stole my mountain line. What I know is the applicant let the CUP expire. What I believe is the county has done their due diligence, where their enforcement discretion clearly could have been worse for the applicant. I believe consistency equals fairness. So when you say, oh gee whiz, our trees should be bigger here, and that sign should be smaller there, well, maybe, maybe not. But if you're not consistent, then you're not fair, and it creates more problems. Sounds to me like if the applicant had met with staff back in the first of February, or whenever it was, I think these questions about the landscaping and the signs and the lighting and so forth, I think those questions probably could have been resolved. I heard Mrs. Dullum say that the family wants to resolve this, meet the outstanding conditions. I think it behooves them to just go forward with it, because I believe they're not that big a deal. I've seen worse. So they can attain their new CUP, and I think we should approve the county recommended actions.
Comments?
Are we, is, is my motion on the floor, and do we have a second? Was that, was that a second?
We were in deliberations. I didn't realize that'd be a formal motion.
I did, I did move the county's recommended actions. I didn't hear a second. I just heard discussion.
Well, let's, let's back up a minute. There is a motion. Is there a second or further discussion first?
I'll second the motion for discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Hallows in favor?
We're, we're still.
I thought you moved staff recommendations, was what you said.
I did, and, and so we are discussing the motion. That's, that's all we're doing right now. And so my, my motion's on the floor with a second, and, and he had his chance to say his piece. I said my piece, and so it goes.
I also agree. As I said, I've driven by the site more times than I could probably ever count. I've seen nothing there that, that would indicate, whatever the tweaks are on, on the new CUP, can't be readily addressed. I'm, quite frankly, I'm much more offended, officially and otherwise, by all those smaller in quantity, similar greenhouses at the intersection of Doris and Victoria, which at one time was doing retail sales, and now have gone into such decay. And, you know, I'm wondering, as an individual and as a commissioner, I'm wondering, you know, why that hasn't been dealt with in some sort of enforcement issue. But I don't know anything about those, that process. I just find that particularly offensive to look at as I drive by. But I, but I think, but I think Mr. Dullum is certainly a diligent, well-respected, has run a very good business there for an awful long time. I've never noted anything that would cause a problem there, short of the issue of the narrowness of the shoulder on the road there, on the west side of the road particularly, and the amount of traffic traversing back and forth on Victoria, coupled with the fact that the intersection of Teal Club Road and Victoria is not a signal intersection, but rather a stop signs on Teal Club Road, which adds to the potential traffic problem that might occur as it relates to signage. But it's, like I said, it's something that I think can be readily addressed, so that's why I'm supporting that motion.
Mr. Wesner?
First of all, the fact that two parties appear got allowed to opinionate prior to a motion. Now, technically, I'm limited to the motion on the floor. Is that correct, counsel?
Correct.
All right. So I appreciate, so if I, the chair will allow me a little discretion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. and Ms. Dullum, I apologize to you. Welcome to the 21st century of government administration. Last time you had to go through this was 1979. All I'll say to that is, the biggest technology increase in 1979 is trying to deal with fax machines. So with that, you have now gone from a four or five-page document with 35 conditions with very little explanation within them, to what you see before you today. Now, that exists today because of what we have learned up here in trying to monitor and protect the public at large in what's called a conditional use permit. And again, a conditional use permit is a, exactly what it is, a discretionary right. What you do have, I took heart with what your attorney said and your representative, that there's an equity issue there. And county counsel has properly pointed out, that's really not within our range. However, that's why I asked the question of your representative. If we had been diligent on our side of the table, you would have aware of some of these things that you have been asked today, specifically signage, lighting, and these things that you have been asked today, specifically signage, lighting, and landscaping. And you would have had to have dealt with them at that point in time, because you're adjusting CUP that was there. And they're, though not as detailed as you have today, they're the fact that you had to deal with those and maintain them according to the plan. So signage, lighting, and landscaping were already conditioned to you. It's just like today, lighting. I've been sitting up here for most 20 years, and we have gone through just a statement that should not be offensive, to, now we have shielding, we have zero at the line, those kinds of conditions. You've heard Commissioner Rodriguez talk to you about that. These conditions have been now more and more detailed, as county staff has identified you, because, again, trying to be consistent across the board when you're dealing with things. As to fair, I'm just going to go, I tell my clients when they come before me, fair is something that comes to town once a year, and this is not it. But leaving that little bit of humor aside, there's, all that's being asked now on this new CUP is, are things that you already require to, but in more detail and specificity. But that, again, we have gone through, when we say we, I mean the actual policymakers, the board supervisors, have allowed staff discretion to work with that. And I am, I agree with Commissioner Rodriguez that an applicant comes, and they feel there's the giant government intimidating you. Question was asked, being an applicant, I'm currently in an application in the city of Santa Maria, so I know exactly what it means. And it can be intimidating, standing down there up before you. Why this, why that? Well, over the last 30-plus years, the whys have come out, and it's to protect the public and the welfare, but also protect you, so you have a clear understanding of what is expected from you. That is why we have a very educated staff that the taxpayers pay for. So I understand your concern, and your experts trying to support you, and what should be right for you. The only thing I will take exception with my two colleagues, the fact that when an applicant can no longer access experts to rely on, and to just listen to only what the government says, is not appropriate. Your right to speak, your right to have your experts challenged, is one of the founding institutions, I feel, in this country. With all that said, I will go back to the original question I asked Mr. Fig. If the county had been diligent, as far as lighting, as far as signs, as far as landscaping, you would have had to pay for these corrections anyway. I don't see anything that gives me any heartburn over bringing you into the 21st century. $60,000, I totally understand, but if you had listened to Mr. Mossler, applicants today are paying huge amounts of sums, not only for their own experts, but also for the fees. And that's just the way we have come in the last 30-plus years, and that's where we are today. County council is right. We have certain discretions, we have certain authorities, but we have to base that on findings, because we are not the policymakers. We have our latitude, and I believe you're going to get that tier today. So I'm going to support the recommended motion, but also with a clear understanding and faith in staff that they will work well with the applicant, they will accept what is existing, and what they're looking for in the future is if you go outside of what you currently have, which is, was in your original CUP in 1979 also. It's just a little bit more detail. So with that, Mr. Chair, I can support the motion.
I don't think that there's anything I can add to what Mr. Weisner had to say. I agree with him wholeheartedly. I can understand and appreciate why Mr. Dolan was concerned about the fact that at any moment he could receive a notice of violation. And I can understand why he might be concerned about that, but I too, I too have to support staff in this matter, and I think the arguments, I understand and appreciate the arguments of the applicant, but I also support staff in this regard. And while there might be some equitable argument, I don't think it carries the day either. So I'm prepared to vote on the matter. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
One more thing, your honor, as a chair. No, just housekeeping, to incorporate Exhibit 8, presided by the applicant, into the record.
You're right. Shouldn't we end those in the beginning and not at the end?
Well, I didn't know what else you were going to get.
No, no, I know, but I mean, yeah, okay. Yeah, I know, I'm afraid of, you know, in trial, otherwise I lose them. Befriend?
Let's see, so for Item 7 on the agenda, just a quick update on the board's action and other matters. The Barber Driving Range that your planning commission approved a couple of months back, that was scheduled for the board on Tuesday. That item has been removed from the board's agenda. Quickly, before Dan leaves here, Dan got married last weekend, or the weekend before. He's a newlywed.
I noticed you didn't invite me to the rehearsal dinner party.
Yeah, yeah. On purpose.
Well, I was going to counsel you that this is your last chance, but it's too late.
Okay, so back to Barber. I wanted to let you know that the item was scheduled before the board on Tuesday, but they called at the last minute on Sunday. Actually, they gave me a call and said that they would like to have an opportunity to amend their lighting. So I'm going to sit down with the City of Moore Park, the appellant in this case, and the folks from Barber, and see what it is that they're proposing. So that's all I have right now. We continued it to a time and date uncertain at the board, because we're not sure, you know, what they're going to submit, or what SEQA review that will require, but I will keep your commission updated on that. Very interesting case.
Madam Director, if I may, and county council, I get too far abroad, because this is a discussion. Since it was brought up at that meeting, and I did discuss it with representatives from the City of Moore Park as well, that when you have those discussions, those discussions are apples to apples as far as outdoor lighting. The city council person made representation of what they did with a retail use not too far away. That retail use, as far as the lighting, was indoor lighting. And to, it was suggested that those types of standards be used. My request would be that when the director sits down, that the City of Moore Park brings their outdoor lighting requirements, so that they're apples to apples.
The city, I've asked the city for their outdoor lighting standards for recreational uses, and they don't have any.
Thank you. I don't want to make that point too loud, but, so therefore, I would ask that then the City of Moore Park bring what they have for Arroyo Vista Park, which is a same or similar use for softball fields and soccer fields.
Is City of Thousand Oaks invited to this at all?
I did call both the planning directors for the City of Thousand Oaks. I did talk to John Prescott, and I did talk to Peter Lyons, the planning director for the City of Seana Valley, and both declined to be involved in this kind of stage of the process. But when we were finished, right, we would include them in the review, but they don't have the time or the interest to get to that level of detail. And since they're not the appellants, we're going to work it out with the City of Moore Park. Let's see, the only other thing I have is the training that is coming up. We're preparing for your planning commission and for the MAC members, so hopefully a letter will go out today or tomorrow to the MAC members from all of our different municipal advisory councils, and they'll come and sit in here and be able to hear the training on SEQA and the Brown Act, and our permit processing, our cultural heritage board, our condition compliance, all things that I think will be of interest to them as well, and then we can get to know them a little bit better. And so that invitation, we have all of their addresses, and that invitation will be going out to them as well. So we're looking forward to that training, and it will be, you know, on Granica, so we'll provide them the link as well for the folks that are not going to be able to make it to our morning meeting. And that's all I had. Did you have anything for me?
Just a question, Kim.
Yes.
And that'll include, as far as MAX, CIB, CSD, out at the beach.
Sure, we'd be happy to invite.
I just, I think just out of curiosity, community service district out there, to give them the option, have their representatives there.
Absolutely, I'll add that to the list.
And Madam Director, I do want to confirm we're not meeting on the first of March, is that correct?
We're not meeting on the first of March.
That's the last.
Right, and we are not.
So we just have to beware the Ides of March then. Boy, nobody's getting my jokes at all. It's just gotten old and tired and no care.
Shakespeare died 500 years ago.
Okay, do you have anything for me? No? Okay. Well, congratulations, Chair Onstott.
Oh, yes. Wait a minute, I've always wanted to do this. Meeting adjourned.
Bailiff, have the applicant remove.